From the agenda, we have a public hearing, 6:30. The estate lot for Richard Seglin, Palmer Mill Road, 6:45, public hearing. Special permit for 355 Plummer Street, commercial building. We have ongoing business, signatures of certifications in Harren Road. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Motion to accept. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have to read the notice?
Yeah.
The Halifax?
Oh, make a motion to go into the public hearing.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into the public hearing for the estate lot. Richard Seglin?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Halifax Plant and Board will hold a public hearing on October 6, 2016, at 6:30 PM in meeting room one, second floor of the town hall, 499 Plummer Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application filed by Richard Seglin, 116 Palmer Mill Road, Halifax, Mass., to seek a special permit to allow a 5.5 acre retreat lot with 50 feet frontage on Palmer Mill Road. Said property is owned by Richard A. Seglin trustee, Alice A. Seglin trustee, the Seglin Family Trust of 116 Palmer Mill Road. As shown on assessors map 84, block 6A and 13A, the applicant seeks a structure sound enforcement with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section 167-16. The state lots area is zoned residential. Petition number 855.
Okay. So, welcome. Any comments that you have? Of course.
Well, okay, I can just inform those who may not have known. It was a total of originally of 24 acres and... Originally was a lot of 4 acres and we subdivided into three separate lots. One will remain 116 Palmer Mill Road, but that will be divided in half, that's a six acre lot. And then the borg property will be divided by taking two and a half acres away from the borg property to add to the subdivision on 116 Palmer Mill Road, which will make that lot, as the chairman said, a five and a half acre lot, up 25... Uh, 25, well, 1300 feet in from Palmer Mill Road, up closer to the country club. The boggs will now become 15 and a half acres that were 18. And my lot, as I said, was six acres. Six acres will now become 18. And basically, the purpose of doing subdivision was, we've always intended to either build on the back six acres of that lot on 116 Palmer Mill Road. But it turns out neither of them...
Children?
Women and children have a home back there, so now we just... The purpose is to put it up there and some of the lots are... Any questions?
Thanks. So, basically what we have is, we've already done a form, so what you're seeking right now is a special permit for the estate lot to build a house there. Okay. Any questions or comments from members?
I guess my other question is, is there any formal plan that needs to get resubmitted when the actual house is determined with the driveway, all the stormwater, septic and all that?
I don't believe so.
No?
I think it's the Conservation Committee still has to get involved. They're involved now with the engineer, Joe Webby, if you don't know him. And they'll bring in a botanist, Joe Webby will, to recheck the delineation of the weapon that's being subdivided. So, pretty much everything in the board else, all your proof is subject to...
Okay.
Pretty much, a couple more things checked after doing will be awesome.
Okay.
You said the plots already been created?
Yeah, we already signed the form. Any questions from anybody in the audience?
Is there anything that shows what the plots will look like after this put up?
So, this is already created. Lot line comes up here like this. Around this lot, back here like this. So, that lot's already created. And what they're looking for here is, under our bylaw, they have to come in and ask for a special permit to build on it because it's an estate lot about 150 feet of 4 inches.
So, the driveway's going to come up that narrow path?
Here?
Yep. And then wander onto the back and the house will have to be in that upland area where the textiles for lot one.
And then this is one house lot, correct?
Yep. Yes. This whole, this whole thing is...
Your lot's that same, right?
Yeah, it's all what lines. Yeah, so they can't be in that.
Yeah, that's what we know behind our house.
I can give you a plot, a plan I have.
Okay. There's no way this... Like the driveway location, everything can change after this. Is no...
Now the driveway...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from audience? Any more discussion?
Well, please, the chairman, I'm hoping the guy that decides our philosophy and just to...
Make a motion to grant the special permit to Richard Seglin, 116 Palmer Road, for the approval to establish an estate lot.
Motion is your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mark can't sign it.
Both?
Can't sign it.
I have a motion to close the public hearing for the estate lot for Richard Seglin, Palmer Mill Road.
Motion is your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, do I have a motion to suspend on board meeting and open a public hearing for special permit for 355 Plummer Street?
Make a motion to suspend the regular planning board meeting to open a public hearing for special permit for 355 Plummer Street.
Motion is your second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
The Halifax Plant and Board will hold a public hearing on October 6, 2016, at 6:45 PM in meeting room one, town hall, 499 Plummer Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application by Joseph Murray, 71 Sharp Street, Unit A-7, AM, Mass., 023... 02043. To seek a site plan approval with a special permit to construct a commercial building with a drive-through window to be located at 355 Plummer Street, Halifax, Mass., 02338. Said property is owned by Ray Messier, block 246 of North East, Mass., 02356. As shown on assessors map 63, block 15. The applicant seeks a site plan approval with a special permit for a commercial building with a drive-through window for Dunkin' Donuts Interpolance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section 167-17, statute of useless. Area is own commercial business. Petition number 856.
My name is Charlie Woodward. I work for Professional Lane Survey Associates. And I'm here representing Joe Murray of Vike Realty. They are, in fact, the owners of the Dunkin' Donuts that's down in Tedeschi's, which Mr. Messier used to own. Back in 2006, we came before you with a site plan to build the Dunkin' Donuts on this new site, okay? And now Joe's going to pick up the ball on that and hopefully stop construction of that in the spring. Basically, what I'm showing you, we were here informally just to get your feelings on certain things. We have since been before the Conservation Commission and have an approval at the Conservation Commission based on the exact same site plan that you approved in 2006. Nothing has changed on the site plan, okay? So, I'm going to start with the existing conditions plan. Obviously, all of this has stayed the same except for the fact that the house that used to be there is now gone, okay? So, that shows you what happened here, okay? I'm going to go right to the site plan. This site plan is what we're proposing. This is, in fact, the same exact footprint of the original plan you approved. The only thing that's going to be different with that building is, if you remember, Ray Messier wanted to build a second floor for offices, okay? There will be no second floor on the building we're proposing to build. So, it'll all be one story. We've left the parking exactly the same as it was, okay? Therefore, leaving all the drainage exactly the same as it was and the traffic patterns the same as the ones you approved in 2006. We had barely enough parking for Mr. Messier's two-story building and we'd rather have a little bit more parking, okay? So, without having the second floor, this gives us much more parking than we actually need, okay? What we have here is a system where you come in on the right-hand side, there was parking left and right. It comes around the back. And what we've done is, close to the building, we've got one lane of traffic that goes through a drive-through window in this corner, okay? And we've also put a bypass lane so that if for some reason somebody's waiting in line and realizes they have an appointment and have to get out of line, they can bypass the traffic that's, that might be backed up in that drive-through lane, okay? And everything comes out here. We have a series of drainage that, again, is exactly the same drainage. I returned in all the drainage calculations and everything. We have a series of catch basins and manholes which goes to a huge cul-de-sac underground leaching facility. We have done per test in that area. We know we have to work with these soils. Just for your information, the septic system is actually going to be out here in the front, so it's very far away from the drainage. There is a, this is designed for a hundred-year storm. And if it were to exceed that hundred-year storm, we have a small crush stone pad here that goes into this area, which is part of our property, and then goes into the wetland. The wetlands have just been redelineated again and they didn't change at all. Everything is as it was. So, basically, what I'm asking you to do is re-approve what you approved in 2006 with the understanding that not one thing on this plan has changed other than the fact that we're now building a one-story building rather than a two-story building. If there are any specific questions that you have, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
What do you have for square footage of the building now in your pocket? I mean, are we doubled in back than what you required for?
No, we're not doubled, but we're over the, over what we need. Like I said, on the original approval, we were just barely at what we needed, okay? Now, we were actually planning two offices in the old plant above this section, and this was going to be Dunkin' Donuts. Now, this is going to be Dunkin' Donuts as it always was, and this will be two, you know, smaller businesses. Sometimes you see Dunkin' Donuts, you know, paired with a dry cleaning business or something like that, you know, drop-off pickup, so...
Because the only thing that did change with our regs was if you had 45% green space, you could cut the parking down even more.
Yeah, well, as you can see, we don't have 45% green space.
I think the question there is that maybe if you were to reduce the amount of parking, you could provide more green space.
I don't think that this, 45% is here.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, you can see all the parking we have here.
Yeah.
You know, and we need this area for the drive-through.
Yeah.
So, there's no way that we would ever be able to need that.
How wide are the drive-through lanes through there?
Typically, it's 10, Charlie.
I was going to say, I think we have 12.
Yeah, I think it's 12.
Is it on here? I don't see, no, I don't think those dimensions are there.
I drive through pad, a typical cement pad is 10, 10 line, 10 and then 20 long, and then the escape lane would be doubled up. So, it'd be at least 20.
Are you guys going to have those concrete pads at the order window and take out?
I'm sorry.
Are you going to have the concrete pads at the order window and take out window?
Yeah, yeah. It's funny because we were toying with some of the materials because the pads are cracking over time.
Yeah.
But we haven't really found anything else that works. And the asphalt, as you know, just doesn't hold up.
Where do you expect most of the access to come from? Is it directly off of Plummer Street or on the secondary access on Stop and Shop?
I think Plummer Street because they're kind of used to that now because we're right next door.
Yeah.
And it goes in almost the exact same way. There's one side is the entrance, one is the exit. It's almost the exact same traffic flow. And I don't see that road, I don't travel that every day, but a fair amount. I don't see a lot going in and out of that road. People seem to use the other way to get there, but it is an option.
And those lanes are 12 feet wide?
Okay.
It then narrows, you know, in some areas we widen out a little coming around the curve and things like that.
Yeah.
But it then narrows to standard 12 foot.
And then that's paved beyond that lot curve to the, to the grass?
Yes, this is all paved also for the employee parking, okay? And for the grading to get all of the drainage down and into the catch basins and manholes.
This is coming back this way?
Yes, sir, it is. It's, it's actually, we do have flow lines shown on the plan which actually show how everything gets to everywhere. But basically, what we have is a set of catch basins here in the front. A manhole goes back to here.
That's a catch base.
Catch basin. We're actually using storm septers, okay, to help with our suspended solids and so that we also met all the clean water standards. And then it goes into an infiltration bit. I am sorry, I usually shut that off. Whoops, apologize.
Hey, no, we are.
And it goes into an infiltration bit here. And like I said, we do have good materials down there, good sands, and we've designed that infiltration bit, okay, for a hundred-year storm.
When did you guys do the test pits? Is this all just old information?
Yes.
Coming back to life now?
Yes, sir, it is.
I guess forgive me, I wasn't around when the original development was proposed.
You're too young to remember that.
Yeah.
So, we, we did test pits in the front for the, we always knew what we were going to do. The minute we got to the site, we had it in our mind.
Yeah.
So, we did all the test pits out here for the septic and then we did test pits back in here for the drainage.
And what kind of separation do you get into the groundwater back there if the wetlands are right there?
All of that's, I don't know that off the top of my head, but all of that is in the stormwater report that I gave you. I'm going to tell you that it's at least two feet because that's the requirement for stormwater. And it actually be more than that.
Yeah, if you're detaining one for 10 years, going to have to get four feet, right, to do a mapping analysis? Do you guys, is there an access easement through this Stop and Shop property that had a lot of that second access to have?
Yeah, it was a driveway, I think, at one time. It's existing, actually, so...
It's actually still a driveway, but it's not in very good shape. It is blacktop there.
There is some paving.
It was there from the original house, and that's an actual deeded access for us.
So, there's an easement on that property that wants to come in there?
Yeah.
It was part of the approval Stop and Shop.
I think you'll see a lot of the traffic come right out anyway, but it's nice to have the double option, so it is, people have options.
As you can see, it's a nice building in keeping in character with the neighborhood, so it's not anything goddamn unusual. And some of the neighbors at Conservation had a concern about the drive-in window being, maybe being too loud at this section. We've always provided for plantings. I provide these all along this line. So, Joe's already been in contact with some of the neighbors and has turned down the volume a little, right? And at the same time, once that is constructed, this will be a sound break for anything.
Well, we also found out that where we are now too, we're right next to our compressor, so the speaker tends to be a little louder because people couldn't listen, they couldn't hear. But when we build a new one, if we get the opportunity, we'll put the compressors on the roof, so that'll allow us to turn the speaker down.
Are you guys doing any sort of pretreatment for the sewage?
Yes, we're probably going to, I've talked with Kathy on many occasions, right? First when this project is in full force and then recently. We're going to be using a Jet system, okay? For whatever reason, we've seen this in other Dunkin' Donuts, restaurants. For whatever reason, coffee, in the cream of the coffee, has a very bad reaction with the septic systems. And as you know, we all depend on those bioorganisms to make sure the septic system is working correctly. So, we've gone over that. We actually have some preliminary drawings already, and what we're planning to do is use a Jet system, which is a type of a system that pretreats everything. If you listen to Jet's advertisements, you practically can drink the water that comes out of the system after it's been treated. But it takes out all the nitrates, it's a series of filters.
I'm going to try that.
No, I wasn't going to try it.
You're not going to tell us, you know, you use that for coffee?
But Jet, it's a, it's just a huge tank. It has a whole series of filters and things like that. And there is a maintenance plan required, so it's not one of those things that once you throw it in, you walk away. You have to sign a maintenance contract with Jet, and Jet comes out every month, every couple of months, and checks things and adjusts them as they need to be so that it's always working. The whole thing is, we don't want anything getting into that leaching facility, okay? It will kill what they call the biomass. And like I said, for whatever reason, they're found through the years from doing these systems without having done any pretreatment, that it does, in fact, wreak havoc with the biomass. So, we've already thought of that, we've already drawn sketches, and we've already talked to the board, to Kathy, the board health officer.
She's okay with the septic being entirely under the pavement as opposed to trying to find some, some grass areas to hide it?
Yeah, again, that was, the day we were, the first day we were up there doing the perks, okay, in the pouring rain, I kind of had a sketch already, and I said, this is kind of what we're doing. And she's never, in all the times we've talked to her, had any problem with them being under the parking area.
Okay.
Again, that's another reason for pretreatment.
And it would be vented anyways.
I'm sorry?
And the leach field would be vented?
Oh, of course, of course.
Is there an opportunity to maybe pull the parking a little bit back from, from the street there? It seems like it's right on the property line.
Well, if, you can see that, if we do pull it back, okay, we're going to lose this going through here, okay?
Yeah.
And one of the problems, I'm not sure I pointed out yet, we do have a 50-foot no-bill zone, no-touch zone, okay? And right along this corner, you can see how close we are with everything. So, even during design, it looks great now that it's on a piece of paper, but it was kind of like five pounds, you know, 10 pounds in a five-pound bag, you know, getting all the things we needed to get here. But we are going to have additional parking, okay? So, at that time, it wasn't possible. Maybe now we could get rid of some of this parking here.
I know you're thinking, right, that maybe if they have a back foot of vehicles...
The only thing about it is going back is going to...
What we find is when people are coming, that the vehicles are getting bigger in some situations. Now that the gas prices are better, but, so when they come around with one and somebody's backing out at the same time, if you have that compressed, it can cause some concerns. So, that's the only reason that, the more space, the better. If you stop to tighten that up, people don't drive exactly the way the arrows show, to be polite.
Like how many, how many parking spaces do you have in front there?
Seven or eight.
Seven, in this one area. But like I said, if I push those back, then...
Do you need those seven?
I think we'd like to have them, okay?
I'm just thinking that curb appeal from the, the street, you know, I don't know if you're proposing to do any light scape in the right of way or even if you could for that matter.
What's going on in front of that, Charlie? How much space you got there on the green?
We have green space in the town layout, okay? Okay? And that's about maybe six feet or so.
So, it's going all the way back here.
Now, that's wrong to visibility, so you don't want to see trees.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We try to keep the front of the building...
But low shorps are good, yeah.
They throw in another sidewalk on that side, then...
Yeah, that scales at eight feet, that green space.
That's directly from edge of pavement to edge of office space?
No, actually, that's from the town layout. From the edge of pavement to our property line is about 18, 19 feet. So, there is a lot of...
You showed us how the center line you're measuring from. I think the green area is the edge of pavement.
Yeah.
It looks like you made...
Right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. From, from the edge of the pavement to where we're proposing parking is about, about six or eight feet. So, we've got...
My concern would be there is if they throw a sidewalk on that side, then it's right on it.
It's good for business. You proposing any sort of curb or is it just a berm on that edge?
We're proposing cave carved berm along the site.
Are you talking like a granite curb in the front of the parking?
Especially to address the issue, if they did add the sidewalk, would they actually like butting up against?
I actually wouldn't be opposed to a granite curb on, on the front there, right where that green space is, because that also kind of helps contain the cars a little bit. Sometimes with the cave carved berm...
You could roll over and...
Just put that one piece across the front... Just with that one piece across the front, Charlie, with the green spaces, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Plus, when the town plows come through...
Yeah, it does get wack, yeah.
Where does the sidewalk stop right now? Is it just on the other side of the street and nothing on this side?
Yes.
Do you guys see any foot traffic in the current Dunkin' Donuts that's shared with Tedeschi's? Or is it all everybody's driving there?
It has. It's all cars, yeah. Other than people in the back parking lot. The nice thing here is if this goes ahead, we have a nicer place to go. There's some bathrooms there, because we don't have that now, but it'd be nice to offer that.
And better control.
And the rental units, we kept pretty small because we've noticed over time that no one wants the big space. We tried, we have another building in Weymouth, and they can't rent big spaces. No one wants it there, we're all small units. So this one here could be 900 square feet or 1,000 square feet if we split it up. So many tenants, so.
Have you had any interest, do you have any idea what type of one?
We worked with one guy who's a dry cleaner. It's a drop-off dry cleaner, though, not a processing. And it's called Clean and Simple, and it's very clean, and it's bright. And it's been great so far. It's been about a year and a half. They have several other locations. They're partnered with another company that does all the cleaning. But it's just drop-off, and it's been great for us. It's a good tenant. They don't cause a lot of traffic. Traffic comes and goes, five minutes in and out, so that's kind of nice. That's really the only people that so far have been expressed an interest. But we haven't really talked to anybody, so it's a little early.
Are you guys asking for any sort of relief or waivers from any sort of town bylaw or regulation?
No.
I mean, that's my only thing. If it would be possible to get some green space in the front, because, you know, driving down the road, just having a little bit of separation. What's the elevation of the building versus the road there? You're down below the road.
74 versus 71?
Yeah, and most of that, if you know the site, you'll see that coming off the road, it kind of goes down into a gully. And most of that was because we have the septic in the front. Most of the time when we design buildings, we like to see them set higher, okay? It just looks more stately through engineering reasons, too. But it looks more stately. You look at your buildings down in a gully right away, especially for business.
So what do you run for an elevation?
The foundation is 74.
What's the street?
And the street is...
71 and a half on the right access, 72 and a half on the left.
So you're higher than the street?
Yeah, yeah. And that helped us with our septic system also.
Is there any reason you're not showing all the septic and the water and the utilities on this plan at this point?
I think we showed, I think we showed areas, okay? But we didn't show the details because, again, we thought that this was mostly site plan approval and the board would be more concerned with parking, drainage, traffic flows, things like that.
Yeah, we typically on the site plan don't get too much detail on the septic like that.
But I'd be more than happy to, you know, as soon as we finalize everything and move forward, I'd be glad to drop off an approved copy from the board of health for your records, for the records, but...
You'd probably get one anyway, huh? You'd probably get one anyway, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. It's going to be public record.
As it relates to the traffic, it looks like, is that the turn lane going into Stop and Shop on the northbound traffic on Twinn Street, so if you're on Twinn Street going northbound?
Oh, yes, this is going into Stop and Shop.
In front of your site, though, is where the actual turn lane and the taper is? So people leaving the site are going to have to cross that if they want to go northbound onto the street.
No, I don't think there's a turn, there's no turn at that point, except that's on where the light is.
No, the plan says there's a four-car stacking light there.
It's actually the other entrance to Stop and Shop on the turn lane.
Yeah, there's actually two entrances to Stop and Shop.
Oh, so is that planned out after it, then?
Yeah, because it looks like the plan has a second proposed turn in.
Is there a turn lane in St. John's?
Yeah. To Stop and Shop.
So is that, is that...
Yeah, it is.
That is there.
There's one up there, too.
Yeah, there's a hell of one up in here, which is actually how most people get it. It's how my wife gets into Stop and Shop, so.
I just think it's going because I'm coming from over there.
Yeah, me too.
I guess I'm just wondering if you're leaving the site now, right? You're going to have people in this turn lane. Have you had anybody take a look at whether or not there's going to be a conflict?
We've actually had, back when we did the original work, we had all kinds of stuff, traffic studies from you, which I did not re-turn in, like I said. Nothing has changed out there. There's no...
The Tedeschi's has the same kind of setup.
Yeah, where you're just crossing that?
Where you're coming out right into the tail end of where you get in.
We did have to do a lot of the traffic study the first time we were on tour.
And I know, I tend to look at things simple, stupid, right? But basically, all you're doing is taking, other than the actual construction, you're just taking the Tedeschi's that's over there and moving, I'm sorry, the Dunkin' Donuts is over there to over here. So as far as things like great changes in traffic and things like that, whatever's there today is going to exist after we're done.
I imagine they're going to hope to fill that space, though, right?
Yeah, but like you said, that...
Yeah, we don't know what's going to happen, because now it's all by 7-Eleven, so. Not sure what their program will be.
Is there any way that that middle turn lane can go both ways?
So like a center lane turning into the...
In the center of the road?
Yeah.
On the road itself?
Oh, yeah.
So you can taper into your driveway and pivot on the side of the road there?
Those are around two driveways right across the street.
See, Harley Arrows go to the left now for Stop and Shop. When Stop and Shop went in, the main entrance is down where the lights are.
Right.
And this is a truck entrance. This is a truck entrance. And Dorothy had to fight to get that right away into her property from that.
Well, that's what I'm not talking about.
Yeah, I'm just talking about that one.
Yeah, but that, if we're crossing to come in, if we're coming from Walmart, we're coming into our driveway, we've got to cross over that...
Turn lane.
Turn lane. If we were ever in an accident, we have no right to be in that turn lane because it's a turn lane to the left only.
You've got to sign that they're turn left only into Walmart, I mean, Stop and Shop.
Right, so if you're stuck, then people are backing up behind you.
Right, people are backing up behind us. And then a lot of the towns and a lot of the states have them going both ways. So someone that's not familiar with the area thinks it's both ways. We're trying to turn, they're passing us, and the people are backed up behind us, you know? It's kind of a, an odd situation.
It just gets, it gets tricky to make that turn lane that close to the intersection, that's all. You know what I mean?
Close to the intersection of where?
In other words, the lane is there for traffic turning that way, but that's had to stop, call it, to get into Stop and Shop. But it wouldn't be if the stop coming the other way.
Well, if somebody's coming from school, going into Dunkin' Donuts, it's going to be the same thing.
It's going to be the same turn as what's there now, right?
Oh, yeah, okay.
But what I'm saying is that as you go through, call that the intersection where that street, you know, that driver's going in now.
The truck entrance.
The truck entrance, which looks more like a road than a driveway. If you have a turn both ways right there in the middle, I don't know. It just, it just seems like it's so close to that. Maybe you could have it that it's not designated, just a turn lane. If you have hours both ways, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that might be difficult to sell.
If somebody was trying to take a left there, they would really stack. Because where their curb cut is, is they'd be right at the entrance to the proposed...
Your driveway is not opposite that. Your driveway's west of theirs, right?
It's right in the middle of them.
Their curb cuts are like right across the street from...
But that's their entrance.
Right.
So you're saying that make a turn lane for Dunkin' Donuts and yours altogether?
Well, it already is for Dunkin' Donuts in some ways.
Yeah, that's existing.
I guess unless you put the staff lane back for, for your driveway, so.
I think there's just such low volume amount of time that you're turning into your driveway, it would be hard to sell to Mastiot T or anybody else to make that a two-way turn lane here. I think that would be tough. People actually go around you on the left-hand side if you're waiting to turn in there?
Well, if you notice, Nashville, and well, all the other states are...
On the bigger roads, right? Yeah, those are all bigger roads, most, right, 139 or...
Yeah, 53 and stuff like that, so. Yeah, I don't, it would be hard. It'd be hard for us there to take a left from the center, not completely jamming up that, that lane where people are coming to either go to Stop and Shop or where it's an existing left turn.
How far down from that? That's one of the reasons. From where Stop and Shop is to their driveway on the other side?
Over here?
The first one. You get scared.
Sure. From the center of the Stop and Shop driveway to the center of their driveway, which is this one?
Yeah, take that one, take both of them.
It's approximately 100 feet.
From the center?
Yes, from center to center. But that's one of the reasons we did the traffic loading, we did it, okay? To make sure that everything coming in was from here, okay? So it's not backing up and that everything goes out here. So it's one continuous loop.
I understand the other side. I'm just looking at the other side, trying to kind of make it so it'd be a turn lane to go across the other way. Well, kind of...
We tried to get curb cuts from Mastiot T today. It's taking up to a year to get a curb cut, okay?
This was not Mastiot T jurisdiction, right? We went through this a couple of weeks ago. It's not.
There's nothing, you know, we'd have to look through Mastiot T.
Not the Mastiot T jurisdiction.
It's not Mastiot T, yeah.
Okay.
But I think changing the straining to some degree is somewhat out of purview or out of your control.
Who has the authority to do line changing and straining?
That probably be our highway department.
Twinn Street is the county rail, right? Okay?
It's not a state.
It's still a county estate, okay?
Route 18, yeah.
I was just going to say, I actually thought county, we did too.
And it's windy.
If we could ask the highway.
I mean, we can look into that, while doing double turn. It is about 100 feet out of the center.
And I'm sure there was some reason why it was made that long going into the Stop and Shop entrance. There must be some sort of calculation to back that up.
Maybe the trucks?
Probably.
I don't know.
And this configuration, the cars that are actually leaving the property are as far away from the other entrances as maybe it is possible.
Right. And as I said, we did provide for a long stacking range. And we also provided for a long bypass line. So we could keep most of our traffic if there were a backup onto our own property.
Is there any other questions?
On the project?
Yeah.
No, we've talked to Joe on a few things. And, but I'd like to say about the paper. The paper is a big problem that's coming across from Dunkin' Donuts.
Trash.
Napkins, straws, straw holders. I mean, we're out there almost every day picking up trash. And that was one of my, my problems. And we talked about the lights with deflectives so they won't come right in front of the house and, and the road and the AM deliveries, which Joe took care of. And other than that, we, it's okay with us to see it go in.
What is the lighting plan? Is it all building-mounted?
Yes, everything is mounted with hoods and things like that to keep the light on our property and not shining to other neighbors, okay? And we have our sign in this corner. And again, as far away from any neighbors as we can and facing in this direction, okay? So again, there is nothing shining across the street or into the street.
And the siding's not going to be backlit, correct, right? It's going to be either lit from below or...
Yeah, I think we just, whatever the requirements would be.
A sign, bylaws are like this.
What's that?
A sign laws are only this thick.
Yeah. For a tile letter.
No, the lighting and everything is all spelled out. That's a second.
They have some nice signs now, though, that, we have one in Wellesley that the sign law is probably uptick, but it's, there's some like reverse lighting that they brought in. It's not, you know, backlit. It's not lit from inside, the lights go in back and kind of shroud it, almost like a halo effect around the letter. Pretty nice now, so, pretty good options.
Any questions?
Could be open to the public?
Yes.
Scott Cassigren, 311 Twinn Street and 359, so the direct border. I had some, I have some initial concerns about the water runoff on the property. I just want to make sure nothing's running off onto my land next door. So I see here along the edge, you have a retaining wall.
Yes.
To bring up your elevation.
And some in the back also.
Yeah, the back across here, okay. Are there any drains at all in that retaining wall?
No.
Allow water out to the property?
It's a standard, what they call a versatile block wall, which are the one-foot blocks. They have cracks in them, you know, that we don't see.
But you're not putting drains into it?
No, sir, not at all.
Is everything you're building here, I know you, I couldn't quite see what you were showing, where you have your catch basins and you're running to your, your system in the back. So is everything running from our common lot line? And is this direction? So it's all pitched that way?
I was going to say, generally, what you're saying, if you look closer, there are two catch basins in this area, okay? And then there are more catch basins up in here. I know it's hot to see them, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But everything pitches down and over and down from this side. So this side is higher than the middle, okay?
Yeah.
And so the middle is lower, okay? And everything runs back into here. This is, again, a high point. We had to do it with the retaining wall standards. We want to keep, you know, we want to keep this high enough out of the water table to meet the water quality standards. And at the same time, we want to be able to catch all the water and get it into there, gravity feed, okay? So no, there is no water going on you at all. We do have an area back in here that is going to stay grass. If for some reason, we, whenever we do a design that we're going to infiltrate into the ground, we always do what they call a positive overflow, okay? A hundred-year storm, everybody thinks that a hundred-year storm is a storm that happens once every hundred years. That isn't necessarily true. You can have two in a week. So although we've overdesigned this for a hundred-year storm, if this were to be filled, it would overflow here in a positive overflow and go into this green area, okay?
And that's a lower elevation than the parking?
Yes, sir, it is, okay? And then it would make its way through gravity, down this slope, and into the wetland, okay? But in those rare instances, right? You said to me, is any water ever going to get to my property? In those rare instances, it will end up in the wetland. And the wetland goes, as you know, way back into there.
Yeah, but it also comes forward towards us.
Yes, but it won't be... Yes, but it won't be, like you said, the grades run this way.
Yeah.
Okay, so no, you're not gonna get any water from this site. We've kept all of this water on our site.
Okay. To that point is, uh, I wasn't able to make the conservation meeting, so I apologize for touching on that. But with this drainage system, is there a requirement, a maintenance requirement?
Yeah.
Through DEP or through conservation?
Not.
If you worry about these things jamming up and next year all the water's backing up.
Yeah, not through, not through DEP.
Okay.
Right? But through the local conservation commission. Part of what we did here requires maintenance. And we did, I believe, submit a maintenance program when we originally did the... But basically all it is is, you know, we have cleanouts at the end of all of these. These are infiltrators. And we just make sure that we don't use a lot of salt. We use no salt, but part of it. And the sands that we may use, the sand the parking lot has to be swept up constantly, right? And then there's cleanouts at the beginning and the end of this. And basically all you do is stick a...
So they end up on some sort of maintenance plan for that to get done?
Yes, and that's typical in almost any drainage system you do, okay? Nowadays, we're not allowed, like we used to in the old days, we could just run a pipe and run it right into the wetlands, okay? Or dump it in the town drainage, even though the pipes were too small. We can't do any of those things today. So there's a whole series of things and maintenance to the bleaching facility or to the drainage system, right? Is very typical of almost every site we do today, okay? And you'll also, not that you can read it, there's areas there, instead of using standard manholes like we used to use, okay? We use, in an instance like this, we use a thing called the storm scepter, which is, you heard me explaining to the board how this jet system is going to work for the septic system. Storm scepter is similar for the drainage system. It takes out all of the suspended solids, the catch basins that were provided. I didn't bother showing you that, but there is a construction sheet also that shows you exactly how each thing is to be constructed and designed. And all of that is reflected in the drainage calculation book that was submitted. Okay, so things from the storm scepters right up until the signs, the heights, right up to how you put up a guardrail, okay? So all of that is on here. So the catch basins today, we use what are called deep sump catch basins. We have an inlet, okay, from parking lot. And then there is an outlet that goes to the storm scepter. From the outlet to the bottom, right, is a deep sump catch basin. We usually go, I think on this one, we went four feet. So that sand that we're worried about getting into the drain system is gonna fill up in the bottom of the catch basin. And as part of the maintenance, Joe's gonna come out and clean it up. Sure, and if some of it gets by, it ends up in the storm scepter and it's taken care of there.
Sure.
Okay, so and like everything, this is gonna require maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, no, understandable. Just wanted to make sure I had a firm grasp on what was going on with that piece of it. It looks like the retaining wall along the property, our common property bound here, at one point approaches six, six and a half feet in height.
And in those areas, there's guardrail.
Okay.
Yeah, anything over four feet or approaching four feet.
Yeah.
By building code, not necessarily by the planning boards, but by building code, we have to provide something where somebody doesn't walk over the side and fall.
Yeah.
So in this particular case, where most of the traffic going to be there is not gonna be pedestrian traffic. It's gonna be car traffic. So in that area, rather than putting a four-foot-high chain link fence like we do in a lot of areas, we put guardrails all along.
Yeah, and that's okay. My concern was more with the raised elevation to that point at six feet. We're really bringing up the low spot between our two lots. You've raised up so much above it that there's no... In the way the wetland is kind of set up, it kind of, if it was to, if it were to continue on, it kind of goes like this. And it heads across over to the country club. And I just see that as a, as a lower area, collecting area that'll now be up six feet at that point. And I just had some concern about what that could back off.
What's collecting that water between our property lines is that wetland. Okay, that's what's actually, and if there comes a time...
Something of an underground river is actually going, but it disappears into the ground.
If there comes a time where you develop your property, right, based on water tables, which you're right next door to us, okay? So your water tables are gonna be very similar to ours. So if you ever go to develop the property, right?
Technically, we do it further left. I own all the land down to Coletti.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah. But then they, that's a nice piece of property over there. It's, you know, it's open and I'm sure that someday something may go there if it's not, it would be someone else.
Yeah, their own office building, man.
So, and they're gonna have to do the same thing. So what's gonna happen is we're gonna be a high point. The wetlands between us are gonna be the low point and then you're gonna be the high point again.
But I didn't have, I didn't have, I didn't have any problems. My concern was just if the water not be shed over to us at all because I don't need to increase the wetland, which is... It's more of a topography, that wetland, than it is actually wet. Kind of an odd situation. It almost, it almost looks like somebody dug it in once upon a time, coming off the logs. But that's ancient history at this point, so.
Charlie was alive now, so.
I might have been. Very old now.
And you said the wetlands were, were they delineated?
Yes, sir.
Because I know my former plan was outdated at this point.
Yeah, actually, we had, uh, years ago, when we first started, we had Dr. Walter Ewerson, who I worked with for many years, right?
You didn't have him do it this time.
Not this time, no. You know, it's a shame. He was a really great guy and he passed away last year, a year or two ago. So now we have Brad Holmes, gotta go out there. And none of the flags were existing. And believe it or not, when we got out there and sent the crew, survey crew out there, it's amazing how those guys are in the middle of nowhere. And sometimes they're within this much of each other. They're on the same branch of the same tree, so.
You can see the knot on a few of them, for the old one, that was a bit, yeah, so.
But the wetlands were...
So was it a full delineation or did you guys delineate your...
The conservation commission said to us, originally we had a larger delineation way out back, okay? And what they said to me this past time in an informal meeting, they said, Charlie, if you just delineate the ones that were like the, close to the 50-foot.
Yeah, affect your 50-foot.
And then affect your actual site. She said, that's good enough for us. And you've seen it out there, how heavy that... My guys called me, said, you are expecting us back in three hours? I says, well, it was already, you know...
The underbrush is pretty tough.
It's amazing how things grow. I mean, we couldn't even get through the woods or it took them three days and said, three hours.
Okay, no, that's...
But I can guarantee you that there is no water going on this site except for those, you know, and being honest with you, those unusual times where we have two or three hundred-year storms in a week. And then the positive overflow will be used, but that'll go onto our property.
Yeah.
Okay, and then eventually make its way into the wetland.
Yeah, and actually the spot you're showing, so this will be tapered back towards the corner somehow. So go back there and that's... My property technically ends here, so it's back into the wetland of the property owner behind, behind all of us.
We'll push it on the other neighbor's.
There you go.
I'm going behind it.
I think the toddler name.
We actually had to put a pipe under the, well, Harrison had tapped into that and blocked it off. And we ended up putting another pipe so it drains, it's all supposed to drain that this way, coming this way.
From the street back.
Right, the pipe that was already in the, in the, under the driveway wasn't quite big enough. It was, Coletti had a pond, I mean, the ducts were in there in the winter. So we made it a little bigger and it goes through, but...
Technically, that water flows from that area behind all the properties, in between yours and ours. And flows down the back of Coletti and then all the way down.
Yes.
To where the wetlands have been removed.
Yes, exactly. Harrison had blocked that all up.
Oh, it was blocked at one point, okay.
Yeah, it was, and in fact, he...
Were cushions, that pipe had to be redone?
Uh, yes.
The pipe through the back?
Yeah, because that was all, and actually what his landscaper was actually making it worse by putting everything in there. And his building became all mold. So it's like, so they had to clean that out and stop his landscaper from doing that.
Thanks. Okay, is there any other input? So you can't convince you to give us any more view space in front of it?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. I think all we can promise is we'll take a look at it, but we, I think...
Can you do an able parking?
Believe me, we've tried everything we can to get the, like I said before, we did, we needed more parking when we first came before you, okay? But I'm, you know, I'd hate to start the whole, I actually said to Joe when I first, when we first spoke, right? To go back in and start everything over, redesigning of driveways, redesigning of the drainage, redesigning of the parking lot. I said, I know this isn't exactly the building you want to build, but I could be like everyone else. Give me a hundred thousand dollar retainer. I'll never return your phone calls and we'll be five years getting this re-approved. They said, which hair is a good design? The conservation commission liked it a lot before. The planning board liked it a lot before. Why reinvent the wheel? So we do have a little bit of extra parking. The building is a little smaller, which is a good thing. But everything else worked last time and it works this time. So I, like I said, I'm not being lazy. I'm just trying to save him a little bit of time and money and aggravation.
Save money with less parking spots, dude.
Well, yeah, now we have to redo the drainage and redo the calculations.
I wasn't sure where, I did hear that you weren't gonna be doing a second floor, so I wasn't sure if maybe some of the parking in the back was gonna be eliminated, kind of. I was wondering where your drainage was going at the time because all I saw was paper, so.
Based on the calculation, it looks like you're actually meeting the minimum parking requirement basically to the space, right? So if you were to go less, you'd need relief from the parking because you're not gonna do it.
No, no, they have more.
There's more than more.
There's more than needs.
Because they had a second floor on it before.
Oh, okay.
So they eliminated the second floor.
It made the amount of the second floor, yeah.
All right, on this, it says that you need 400, 40 required, 40 provided. So it's actually 30 required because it says the building area is 3900 square feet.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the notes are outdated.
Yeah.
From the original, the plans and references and wetland delineations. Some of those are...
And that's not gonna work.
We always find problems when we get snow and everything.
That's what I'm saying. You know, you're working everything right here in the entrances and exits.
I'm just a little concerned about it because, you know, the year we had all the snow, that would be interesting too. Now, you're like, okay, now how's that gonna happen, so?
You just trucked it out.
That's what we were doing, yeah. It was not a lot of fun, you know? We filled up the Naval Air Force Base, uh, where naval weapons.
You're not gonna do that now?
Uh, not anymore, no. New road, yeah, yeah, almost done.
Would you mind clarifying what the actual square footage is gonna be or the parking requirement is?
I think the square foot is right at four grand, right around here.
The square?
Of the total, the building footprint, yeah. I think it's close to four grand.
Yeah, it says 3900 on there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 39.
Because the tenant spaces, one was 1,000, one was 900. So that's what throw it off and then the topic's...
So it was one per hundred, 3900, you need 39 and a half spaces, so you need 40 spaces. You're providing 40, so you're providing what the zoning code requires. But I guess I would agree with Gordon. It'd be great even just to get a couple of feet in the front of your area, probably a 35-foot wide drive aisle in the front. I don't know how many cars are gonna be circling around because that's the exit.
Well, yeah, I mean, maybe we could just, instead of going eight, we could go 10.
Eight or something.
Something like that, how's that sound?
Or even from the property line, because you're right on the property line, you could give, you know, a three-foot.
Oh, come forward, you mean?
No, further back from the street.
Oh.
So I don't even know if you can plant in the right way.
Right, yeah, I don't know.
It's out of your control.
Yeah, that was not my control, yeah. What do we have, Charlie?
A lot of parking spaces are 20 feet long by 10 feet wide.
Right.
Okay, so again...
What do you have from the, from the property line back to the building or here to drive there?
It says 61, right? 61 minus 20, it's 41.
Put it open from the back of the parking space to either the building or the closest walkway. Like how much open pavement is that?
40, so. 35.
35, yeah.
So the typical drive-offs.
We could go back to...
So if you could get that close to the 24, you could add almost 10 feet. Yeah, or even 30 and get five, you know, just something, I understand that.
What if we went from, I know it shows at eight now, what if we went from eight to 10 all the way across? So we had two feet, but the whole one for it, so we get a little bit more now. Plus, we're gonna have the curving, so... Because the granite curve's gonna take a little bit of those days, but not by much, but rather than the firm.
Can you plant something?
I was gonna say, would you?
Yeah.
Low, low ground shrubs?
Like your business owners.
My guess would be where your entrance is, your entrance is here and you're exiting here. My guess is gonna be, those parking spots are gonna be pretty open and people are gonna park down here next to the building and here.
They write that, no one likes to walk.
No one likes to walk.
Nobody's gonna, we have employees over there.
Employees will be out on the front row.
We have tenants going in here and they don't know it's gonna be there, so.
Yeah.
I hate to cut something short because if somebody comes in and says, oh, I can't park it, sorry, you're drunk.
You also need someplace to pack the snow.
Exactly.
And I don't think you would be packing the snow against the street.
No, I think if you put it down back, it doesn't let the park up front.
Move the cars up front, yeah, yeah. But we can go with the two anyway, it's better, you know, than...
I mean, I would just like to see some kind of green in the front. I mean, you know, as we're building out the road, you know?
Do you guys know the big trees on the street, are they owned by the town or are those on the property?
Which one?
The big males.
Next, the next part of the south, under property?
I don't know, do you guys have any of them still?
No, but, but we've, another...
Because I think I have one right near the corner.
Yeah, another part of the process when we first started this, right, was that those trees were governed by the historical society.
They all did, no.
We had to go to the historical society to get permission to take some of those down and onto the project, which we did get permission.
Okay, so some of the, I call them street male, I guess. Those, you've already got, they figured out those, I wasn't sure if they were in the road or if they were on our lands. I had no idea where they were, so. They're not doing well, I know that, but they're big trees.
They're not taking shots.
They're nice to have, but you can't see them.
According to this, all of the 20 to 25-inch meters will be removed.
Yeah, that's, that's...
They're borderline right on the edge of the layout in the property. But it looks like just that one could probably survive about 60 feet down from the property corner.
Mind if I take a look at that?
Your trees.
My trees, yeah. If it's gonna cost money, then it's my tree.
So these three here will be removed if they have not been yet.
Okay. Yeah, so this is... Okay, yeah, so I knew there was still some there, so these three are coming out. And then this one.
Was that on your one?
Yeah, that's on.
Yeah, yeah.
But I didn't know that's gonna...
It's too bad.
I don't want people to get an accident trying to plant these. I do need to share, I don't know, yeah. I don't, but, but they're saying that these are in the town layout than the trees.
Yeah, look, pretty close, but they'll be removed.
But you had to go to somebody else to get the okay.
Well, that was, that was...
I'm just wondering if my next, better quote, my next tree down is gonna cause you problems getting in and out too? I mean, I don't care if the tree's gone, but...
Well, like I said, the trees themselves are pretty much on the property line from this town layout.
Yeah.
To us, and from what I remember, we had to, those were considered historical trees. And we had to go to the historical society. They reviewed the plans also, right? And they gave us permission to take those down.
Okay.
They weren't in great shape 10 years ago, to be honest with you.
And also it is that the trees are close to the layout, but not that close to the edge of the pavement. So as far as a view, there shouldn't be an issue.
I was just thinking of the turnout.
Yeah, I think the trees should be pulled back far, further than that from the empty pavement.
If it turns out to be a problem, you can point to that.
Look at the car.
Yeah. Once you don't ask me to cut it down.
So then, we have any more input from the audience? Does anyone have any more? So we've got 10 feet of green space on the front.
Yeah.
Two of the trees on the private, private.
Two trees on the private property.
What we tend to do is...
Give us some...
I was going to say, let us take a look at that. Okay, you understand opposition, as we're tight as it is.
Absolutely.
But by the same token, we want to try to give you guys, you know, it's your town. We want it to look like you want it to look, so let's see if we can at least get you something, somewhere between two feet and five feet. I'd hate to narrow all those travel lanes in the front, okay? Because that's where, you know, that's where people are going to have problems. They're not going to have problems in the back, you know, where I've only got a twelve feet. They're all going to be running into each other in the very front of the building, so...
I really don't see why everyone going that way anyways.
Coming all the way around.
Everyone would go common clockwise around the building.
I think we'll be okay, so...
Okay. So if we can give you somewhere between three and five feet or something, and plant it with low-growing shrubs, that's something that would make the board happy. Let's... If you want, you can make that a condition of approval. We don't mind. We'll give you anything we can. If we can get that five feet to six feet or eight feet, we will. Well, I'm going to have to look at the...
Keep your watch, we're almost done. Let's close it up.
Yeah, see what we have there.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're here for the special permit for the... Special permit for the driver? And this special permit is for the driver? Because we don't need a special permit for the size of the building.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the special permit for three-five-five Plymouth Street, common building? Are we going to roll through all of these?
Pretty much.
Okay. Conditions of approval, hours of operation, five AM to eleven PM. Design plan is to be approved by the zoning officer. Maintenance of the drainage system, collective plan. Maintain your parking areas. Dumpster pickup between seven AM and nine PM only. Outside storage limitations, no outside storage. No unregistered vehicles. And no outside sales or flea markets.
I have a question for the delivery times.
Yeah.
The main delivery... Paper goods and so forth, that comes when we're open typically, so after five certainly, but typically it's seven or eleven, or something around there. The donuts come in before we open. What time do they come in?
I mean, we're between three and four thirty.
Three, four thirty, yeah.
So there's someone there after builders?
No, they get peas, the donut truck, so... They push them on the front door, and turn the radio on. Now. They better be, anyway, so we have a lovely job the next day.
I have your number.
Yes. This is what it is. And they're in and out pretty quick. It's too rare, actually, we all move on, so...
Okay. I guess the last condition of approval is a potential green space in the front of the building where... On the street.
Between the entrances.
Yeah. And what did you say, like, between like three and five feet? To be determined.
To provide one. And to install the curb. For a granite curb.
Yeah, granite curving. If they're giving us three... If they're giving us three feet, then the granite curb does not... The concern, I think, with the granite curving was that it was going to be, if you were rebutting right on the end there, with a potential...
Do we need that, then, or should we do the kit code for them and bring the green out more?
I would say anything in the right of way on the returns, you definitely want to do with the granite. Get paper into whatever it is inside, I guess.
I mean, I thought the requirement for that was kind of the fact that we were potentially going to... If someday there was going to be a sidewalk there.
Sure, that's fine.
But...
We're going to be pretty far back.
If you're going three feet back, then you're not...
Not really, yeah.
You know, they can't be putting a sidewalk on your property.
It's going to...
Three feet in.
Yeah, and then the rest of it is not curved, so it's a little... That's a tough side for a sidewalk. The slope off the road is pretty steep.
You were saying that... We said something about putting a granite curving in case there was going to be...
But that's when he was at the lot.
That was when he's... And that's what I'm saying, is now that he's not on the lot line, there's really no call for that, so...
Fair enough. We'll go for, yeah, the green. Fair enough.
But you're still going to do granite curb on the returns, so basically back to the point of tangency on these entrances?
We weren't planning on that.
But it's granite out of the street, right? Is it?
No.
It says granite curb on the plan.
Yeah, I believe so, going into stop truck. Is granite sign right out?
Just at the radius.
Yeah, maybe.
It's not running all the way down there, is it?
Probably not.
I don't think so.
I would just think that if that's in the right of way, then it's the town's, and if it's the two minutes, and it gets all ripped up, then the town has to repair it. So I would think that we would want it, at least for the return, and once you get to the tangency point, you could change it to the two minutes, or whatever kind of curve you want.
So granite curb, so after the...
What's the entry and the exit?
If you guys are okay with that?
I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
I see, it seems logical that that may be something you want to do now.
Anything else? Okay. I'm done.
All right, have a motion. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, so close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And... Planning board being open. And then we can do the approval of the site plan.
We have to do this separate?
Yeah.
Do you have a timeline when you anticipate constructing this? When you anticipate constructing or starting construction on the project?
Not yet. We have... We don't own the property yet, so we have to kind of work that until...
It's a minor, we do.
It's a minor, we can, yeah. But no sense in buying until we know...
Yeah. Buy something you can't use?
Yeah, that's kind of our react, so make sure that we can do what we need to do.
Will you be doing an as of the plan afterwards?
I was going to say, they're typically required, so...
So you can reflect any of those changes?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. Are we ready for the approval of the site plan?
Yeah.
All right, make a motion to approve the site plan for three-fifty-five Plymouth Street, Lot thirteen. Where's all my phone? What's that?
Map sixty-three.
Is it map sixty-three? Okay, map sixty-three? I'm not really... Oh, there it is. Lot thirteen, yeah, map sixty-three. Do you want any of the other references?
The date of the plan?
Uh, revised July twenty-eighth, twenty-sixteen.
One floor.
Okay, more. Oh. Bike Realty LLC. Trustee Bill and Kevin Donovan.
Okay, a motion is your second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, yes. Go talk to him, sure. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your help. I'm sure we'll be chatting. Yeah, we got it. Oh, okay. Thank you.
I wanted to say something to you.
Okay.
Yeah, it was... Town was a little different from the tip.
That's different.
How old is this?
Hey, I'm Joe.
Hey, Joe.
Scott.
Yeah. Oh, no kidding. Oh, good to see you again. Thank you.
And the center of the sheet, that's just the cover sheet?
Yeah, I can stamp them. I'll get it to him if he can, we'll get it after.
Appreciate that. All right, then.
Case of Bill. Reviewing minutes code?
I did. Great.
Oh, excellent. Yeah, they refer to it? We do now.
The minutes.
Twelve minutes.
Mr. Belcher?
Mr. Belcher. At six-thirty-six PM. Iconic.
Quite the presence.
Make a motion to pay the Fulton Halifax press invoice seven-eight-eight-one and seven-eight-nine-eight for a total of a hundred and sixty dollars in average payments.
The motion is your second.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to pay the Merrill Associates invoice number three-four-eight-five for eight-hundred-and-forty dollars with Sherwood Drive inspection.
Motion is your second.
Come on, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Edit your questions to Merrill Dillon right now. On Sherwood Drive, construction oversight inspections?
Yeah.
Yeah, like stormwater, pollution, pollution control kind of stuff, or... You didn't get that?
I seconded the first one.
You seconded the first one?
Yeah, me, too.
Thank you.
There you go. I seconded, you still what?
Do we typically have, I guess, engineers on behalf of the town oversee construction?
Well, he was. Okay. Because he was doing, uh, on Sherwood. That was the sidewalk construction. There was a change down there.
Those were invented around hydrant?
And I left the kid with the sidewalk, and I did the road, so... Call them out separately for that.
Did you do this one?
I did.
And then...
Says we own thirteen-thirty.
I like how you document the fact that interrupt... Interrupts me while we're in the middle of talking. That's all going to be.
If you would like to do this meeting in the...
Challenge order?
We did reverse by the culprit.
For the...
So that doesn't get recognized through anything that we see?
We have revolving accounts from the planning board, so each of the developers has its own account book in that.
Okay.
And then the money that they deposit in there, because, um... The bills get taken out against that account. So that money drops down, we call...
So we get the bill first, right? So then the town pays it, and then we...
No, no, they give us money to begin with when we start the project.
So they start an escrow account, basically, and put bull against it.
And as that account stops to go down in the escrow market before it...
Okay.
It was me who made the motion to approve the...
For me?
No, this one.
Country club?
Country club, right?
Country club.
I don't know.
I believe so.
The notice doesn't say.
Yeah, it doesn't.
No, that's what I was asking. Thought it was me.
It's a...
Return of the motion for three-fourteen bonus?
Yeah.
Why would it be second class?
Yeah, but whose name? Make a motion. It doesn't say who did it.
Oh. And on the next page where it says like motion and then second?
On the top.
Oh, yeah, the...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's supposed to let our sentiment string away, but not necessarily respond to that.
Members get that.
Yeah.
I was checking, I was like, ooh. Still can't believe, really, that that works.
As good as it works, it works. On the zoning board application, it looks like they're requesting it will be for densely, for some reason. I don't know if they're just covering your bases, just in case.
Yeah, maybe.
No response?
Wasn't angry at him.
He was, yes. So you go it that way?
That's exactly what we decided.
What the motion?
What's that?
You were okay with that motion?
I'm okay with it. Make a motion to accept the Halifax planning board meeting minutes, September fifteenth, twenty-sixteen.
Your motion is your second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay.
Quick on the draw.
Aye.
Aye. How many copies do we decide?
You'd think I know this by now.
Last motion, Charlie.
That was the last we ever heard of?
Oh, no. No, he wants that.
He's got five grains still sitting around there. Six.
Get some driveway for that.
How long after the... I guess, just after communicating, can we just use that money to do the work on the town's behalf? Isn't that how it works, so...
You would think.
Is that... Is that one? Or is it cash?
It was cash, right, because we had to give it back. So if we have cash in, and we count, and there's some response, and at some point it needs to get remedied, right?
Yeah, don't you... You got to take it to the town meeting and vote on it.
Is that how it works?
Yeah. They spend all of people's money just for the town meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion, Joe?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.